All the meeting order, all seven of you. Good to have you all here.
It's good to be here.
Good. Well, welcome everybody to our, uh, December twelfth, two thousand sixteen meeting. Uh, it's good to see so many here. I see we have the, uh, city folks in their, in their, uh, southwest corner as usual and public send tends to stick to the east side. It's good. Uh, we're glad to have you all here. If you would, uh, join me as we open our meeting prior to, uh, Nick Webb, our scout, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then, uh, Adam Buckler is here, I believe, with, uh, will lead us in, uh, an opening invocation. Please rise.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward and from the, uh, really the institution and the religious group that started this whole community, the Union Bible College.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you for the privilege that it is to be here tonight. We thank you first and foremost for life. For it's in you that we move and live and have our being. We thank you not only for temporal life, but we thank you through Jesus Christ for the hope of eternal life. We thank you further for liberty, the liberty above all others, the liberty from self and sin through your great salvific plan. But we thank you also for civil liberties like we enjoy here tonight afforded to us by this great nation, afforded to us by the state in which we reside and then the city of Westfield. We pray that you be the master of ceremonies in everything that's said and done tonight. Blessed Mayor Cook and all the council members give us unity of purpose and vision and passion for the good of this community at large. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. President Lehman, it's your meeting, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome everyone. Will the clerk note the presence of a quorum, please?
Here.
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 Thank you. Going through our agenda, I believe that it is complete and accurate as presented, so we will move along. This time we will look to the council for the approval of the minutes from the meeting on November fourteenth and also on the twenty-eighth. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve the amendments from November fourteenth and November twenty-eighth as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This time we will look to guests that wish to address the council on items not on the agenda. Do we have any cards, please?
I have one card, Mr. President, Robert E. Hart.
Mr. Hart.
Mr. Hart, you want to speak, please? Will you get close to the microphone, Mr. Hart?
Okay. I don't know where to start, so I'll start at the beginning. I very generously been given three minutes and I'm going to try to use it the best of my ability. There's a law that was been passed, I don't know when, that stops me from selling a piece of my property to a gentleman who trims trees. Across from him on my property is another gentleman who trims grass. They think they'd make a lovely wedding, but we can't get them together. Now, I was informed that there's a law that's on the books about roads and things on private property. I haven't seen the law. Wouldn't do me any good if I did because I'm not a, a, a lawyer. I couldn't speak with it. But I do know one thing. And it's been true since the beginning of time. It's called amendment. Amendment number twenty-three of the law that keeps me from selling my property says that this was, this law was passed for large properties like, uh, Target, mo- uh, and some of the other big ones. So that their entryways could handle everything, but it was certainly, I'm certain it was not intended to pri- apply to a little business where there's four little businesses struggling just to make a living on a four and a half acre plot in Westfield, Indiana. I've been here forty-one years on that, excuse me. Forty-six years on that hill and it was nothing when I came here and when I leave, it'll be nothing again, I would guess. I thank you for your time. I'm sure I went over three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hart. Anyone want, else want to address the council on items not on the agenda? Hearing, seeing none, we will continue with the agenda items. At this time, we will, uh, look to the approval of the claims. The claims docket has been presented. I would entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will look to the mayor and welcome him as we have some special presentations. Mayor Cook.
Thank you, President Lehman. We have, uh, three that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. Is anybody here from, uh, the pancreatic association? Thank you for coming forward. You are.
My name's Jeremy Parsons.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Jeremy Parsons. You know, we get, we get asked to do this occasionally and, uh, as I read through this, these facts are just phenomenal. Um, now, in true Westfield tradition, we kind of fracture the King's English and we leave out all the whereas's, but I guarantee it's all on here, okay? But some amazing facts. Uh, two thousand sixteen, fifty-three thousand people diagnosed with this. Forty-one thousand and plus will die from the disease this year, including eight hundred and sixty deaths in Indiana. Uh, a huge medical issue. Do you have a personal relationship to this?
Uh, yes, my father died, uh, ten years ago at age of fifty-two.
Fifty-two years old. So we haven't made much progress.
Uh, no, we're getting there slowly but surely. It was, uh, five percent survival rate when she was diagnosed. It's up eight percent now and.
Five to eight percent, huge, huh?
Yeah, I volunteer with the pancreatic cancer action network, the Indianapolis Coalition. We're just trying to spread the word, raise awareness and double that survival rate.
Congratulations, you're a representative. Appreciate you very much. Any of you have a rock?
Absolutely. Two things I love, Jim Gilbert and the rocks. Pancreatic cancer.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much. Some of the facts, I just wasn't telling you that we declare, as mayor, declare the seventeenth day of November is when we were supposed to do it with the world, is World Pancreatic Cancer Day, and we so proclaim here in the city of Westfield, Indiana. So thank you for all your efforts. Keep it up. On next, something that affected all of us yesterday. Yesterday. Everybody's supposed to say, yeah, we know what that was.
I said that.
Of course, Matt, you rode, you carried the torch, right?
Of course.
Very good. Yesterday, Indiana, um, turned two hundred years old. Huge, uh, step. We're still here. Uh, Jay, President James Madison signed the Act of Inning, Indiana. As a nineteenth state, you all knew it was James Madison, did you not?
Yes.
So we, uh, we want to thank this sign to recognize the state of Indiana. I know we're all very so humbled and pleased to be residents of the state and reach our two-hundredth anniversary. It's, it's quite a mark. I don't think you made a big enough deal out of it, but, you know, earlier this year, uh, we had the, the torch came through Westfield and started down at Cool Creek Park and, uh, Mick and several others rode the car up to, uh, up Westfield Boulevard to, uh, Bob Moschamp's property, traded some people out and it came up to the Union Bible Campus up there very fitting. It was, uh, it was a beautiful sign you didn't see. So we would like to, uh, proclaim the eleventh day of December as Indiana statehood and by Centennial Day to the city of Westfield, Indiana. I don't have to give this to you though, so we're just kind of setting it up here as our proclamation of the state. And next, we have a few extra visitors up here. Uh, we are so very, very proud to, uh, have the ladies and gentlemen of the Westfield, the two thousand sixteen Westfield Football Team, who all of you knew, know, I'm sure, in this room. Won the five A state championship. So, uh, did you guys turn them up here and grab it? Yeah, Coach, if we had the whole team up here, how many would we have?
About a hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty. I know our foreign marshal would not like that. Many of these people perform, so how did we get these guys?
These are some of our seniors.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
These are some, we, we have five young ladies who are managers, some of our student coaches.
Okay.
Uh, on our football team and we have forty senior football players, um, the vast majority of which have been here for a long, long time. One of which was an exchange student from Germany.
Really?
The vast majority have been here for a long, long time and been part of the roster years.
Well, to reach that kind of achievement for our little city is just phenomenal. And I know you also do not forget the simplistic side of it.
Yeah.
Uh, as you know, Westfield schools, top graduation rate, top test scores. Now we add to it the athletics and, uh, you, boys and ladies of Westfield on the map for football. It's absolutely fantastic. Coach, tell me a little bit, you also work them off the field.
Sure. Well, seven of our forty, uh, they don't know this yet, seven of our forty have been named to the academic golf state team, which in order to do that, you have to, uh, qualify academically with your GPA, your test score, and then also you have to play, uh, uh, at least seventy percent of the snaps for the team. It's very, very hard to do. So I would like to point out that, uh, that they are excellent students as well. And an extremely unselfish bunch. So if I could brag on, on this group here, think about this, uh, these forty off the field have, we counted it up from January until the state championship game, they literally, on the physical side alone, had had, um, kind of all the weightlifting sessions, the running sessions and the practices. They literally had had more workouts than we had had days in the year. Um, so they are, nothing to grind now. But, you know, when we, when we start our off season, there, there's two days a week where we go three times a day. So this isn't exactly the easy route. So in today's society, um, where delayed gratification is not really the thing to do, although I'm very, very proud of, um, the fifteen seniors who started for us, the twenty-five who did, uh, I, I guess I would like to say, you know, to have a group so completely unselfish and so, um, you know, in love with each other and our school and our culture to say, um, for, over the course of years, we will come in and work out more times than our days in a year. And we'll do that for three years, just so that hopefully by the time we are seniors, we'll have a chance to play in this game and they did. So not only did they play, they won. And I became my first state champion in football, uh, which is, is extraordinary feat. When I did the job here six years ago, we, we were, uh, not doing also hop and, uh, sport football. And I said, well, what do you have coming? And they said, well, we have a, a group of kids in the sixth grade that are pretty good. And I said, um, I'll take them. And so here they are. And, uh, they were pretty good and, uh, they, they sacrificed so much. And I think if you really do the amount of public service that they do, whether that be Special Olympics, food campaigns here in the area, um, just mentor programs, raising money for, for cancer. Uh, I obviously appreciate Jeremy and his cause tonight. Um, just all the things that, that they have done off the field that no one even knows. Um, you would be way more proud of them to know all of that than if you were to know that, hey, we're the best team in five A. And then the last thing I would say is the way that we have supported each other and the hard work they put in and the sacrifice and just the care. Uh, that, to me, that just mirrors everything that the city has done for us with the mayor and the city council. Um, we, we do not forget. I know that sometimes people, it's easy to just, uh, be entitled and, um, not remember those who have made it possible for you. And so, uh, we don't. So we are grateful for everything that's been done for us. Uh, we go out in that stadium every single day and, and, uh, we, we know that, you know, all the people that have come in to, to making that possible and it wasn't a bad thing. I know that just people support us. And people have helped us even practice indoors in that wonderful facility at Grand Park this year. I mean, every little thing. And when we won, I gave my three points. So I would say, uh, I, I would say that every little gesture along the way and every hour of work that they put in along the way.
Yeah.
So, um, we won by the smallest margins. And you know what? Um, I think that everything that's happened in the time that these guys have been here has been important and, uh, we're grateful to represent Westfield as state champs.
You got it well. And, you know, I had the, I had the pleasure of addressing you, I think, in one of those last evenings out at the G-PAC when you were practicing inside there. And I told you that the city was, uh, very, very proud of all of you. And, uh, you took it from there. And, uh, let's not forget, actually, you were not the first state championship for Westfield this year.
Not this year, no.
We also had the golf championship in our little school. And try as I might, I can't get those guys out. By winter, they all hibernate. So I'd like to ask some of them here. We went through all the whereas's. You could see it all here, right? But the bottom line is, we heartily congratulate and recognize Westfield High School Football Team as a two thousand sixteen state championships in five A and we appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Three laughs for, uh, the city of Westfield or mayor or city council. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
The worst part is you guys got to stay here for the whole council meeting. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kelly. Thank you, sir.
Terrific here.
Thank you. Thanks, girl. Hey, thanks, everybody. Don't forget to support. Wow.
Sarah, motion to adjourn. Hearing none. We do, uh, have a special presentation and I'd like to welcome our clerk treasurer, who is going to give us a little update and share with us some details on her office and what she's been doing. So, welcome. You can do it from anywhere you want. It's your, it's your microphone.
Okay. Well, I've only been here twenty-three years and this was, um, this is only my second presentation, so, um, we'll see how this goes. Um, I didn't do any charts or PowerPoints, even though they look pretty. I, it's just, there's not really a whole lot you can do with just numbers. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Is that better?
Speak right into the microphone. Don't be bashful.
Oh, my voice is usually, okay. Um, anyway, I'm hoping maybe this will help clear up any misconceptions regarding the role in the clerk treasurer's office and exactly what's done in my office. Um, the clerk treasurer is responsible for maintaining and managing the financial records for the city. We are the fiscal arm of the city. Um, to begin with, I kind of wanted to give you a perspective of where we were ten years ago and where we are now. Um, it compared with using data from two thousand six in comparison to two thousand sixteen. Um, I suppose it's a lot of numbers. In two thousand six, we managed and reconciled four bank accounts. We currently manage and reconcile fifteen. Um, using the data for the only, for only the corporate, the corporate side of the city, in two thousand six, we had twenty-seven funds, a hundred and five revenue numbers and two hundred and fifty-one appropriation numbers. We currently have ninety-seven fund numbers, two hundred and eighty-five revenue numbers and five hundred and fifty-nine appropriation numbers. In two thousand six, we processed three thousand invoices. To date, we have currently processed five thousand within NAV and four thousand one hundred P-card transactions. Additionally, each month, we process all ACH and wire transactions for the city of Westfield. In two thousand six, the total of DLGF-approved budget amounts amounted to, um, ten million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three. In two thousand sixteen, the amount, and again, these are just DLGF-approved amounts, was thirty-four million, seventy thousand, four hundred and three. With our total budget overall for twenty sixteen is sixty-seven million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine. We've grown quite a bit. Um, NAV was implemented in twenty fourteen and became our book of record, but not without hours and hours and days and days and weeks and weeks of, of, of work. This was, it was a lot of work to get this implemented.
Would you explain to the public what DLGF and NAV?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, DL.
I was confused.
DLGF is Department of Local Government Financing. We have to get approval from them, um, on our budgets. They have to approve the, they have certain funds that they have to approve. Um, NAV is Navigator. It's our software for, that, that's used within the city. It's our financial book of we- book, book of record. And, and we implemented, implemented it in twenty fourteen. It was difficult in the early stages of implementation, but my, but the office now has a much better under, understanding of the inner workings of the system and has become more efficient with using it. Uh, my staff also attends continuing education on the financial system with the record-keeping processes. NAV allows for the import of P-cards, which is our procurement card. Payroll and enterprise being our stormwater and trash data. Because of the ability, directors can monitor their department budgets by using online access of the near-time financial information of their expenses and payment statuses. NAV also allows for the import, oh, I'm sorry, for the departments. This has automated a lot of their processes. However, with this information gets to the clerk's office, it means manually entering, scanning and attaching invoices within NAV. Uh, we must determine the department and appropriation numbers for each invoice prior to department head's approval. Once the department heads approve an invoice, we then review in each invoice for posting, verifying the amounts to be paid and then print the checks. Another manual process for the clerk's office is research. Depending upon the issue, there's no longer just one place with NAV to look for information to end, to pertaining to invoices and/or P-card transactions. While iss- issues are always resolved, it can take more time to accurately address whatever situation is presented to the office. In two thousand eleven, the clerk's office was the first to participate in the P-card program, thanks to John Rogers. I think he's here somewhere. There he is. Um, due to our precipitation, fifty other agencies have adopted this program. Because we are the fiscal arm of the city, the clerk's office oversees and verifies all the purchasing guidelines for each department, including setting limits for each card based upon the MMC codes, which were established and are maintained in my office. Certain purchases can make, can be made using the P-card. The P-card allows departments to make purchases within the approved guidelines while receiving an, an annual rebate of one point five percent. Is this getting too much, in too much detail? Okay.
What's MMC, Cindy?
I'm sorry?
You said MMC. What does that stand for?
It is the, I.
Merchant.
Merchant, yeah. Merchant category code. I'm sorry, I never can remember what that is. It's, yeah, I go through and I set so they can't use a P-card at anything that's labeled like a bar or, you know, just, I have to go through and set the codes. Um, but anyway, we receive a rebate of one point five percent. Uh, the percentage currently exceeds the interest received on short-term investments right now. Um, in two thousand sixteen, the city received nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in rebates for the previous year's purchases. We're expecting a larger amount for next year. They're always a year behind. Um, like invoices, the P-card is automated for the department's approval process. However, in the clerk's office, it requires at least two days of verification on manual entry for the export from Chase into NAV. In payroll, the E-time program was implemented to make the time entry more efficient for the departments. Each employee has their own log-on to receive their private information, such as vacation and sick time accruals, uh, print copies of pay stubs, since we're all direct deposit, um, W4s and any other payroll information specific to that employee. Again, while the E-time system is automated for employees and departments, it's not necessarily true for the clerk's office. There are fourteen departments for each pay excluding the council, uh, Board of Public Works and, um, Plan Commission. Each pay is approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The clerk's office calculates each department, what each department owes to make payroll, such as, um, additionally, we calculate by department taxes, all insurance per four fifty-seven, HSA and many more agency payments like child support and any, anything like that. Due to the volume, time constraints and importance of accuracy, this is a full-time position within the clerk's office. Now, we got, we have Grand Park has become the cornerstone of the city. Like a business unit, the financial reporting of Grand Park requires more detailed categorized information. The day-to-day operations and long-term capital planning are similar to those of utility with revenue accruals and time being essential. In two thousand fourteen, a separate bank account was established to help relieve the challenge of accurately trying to reflect the financial transactions associated with Grand Park. The clerk's office works with administration and the Grand Park director, using the detailed financial information to facilitate the desired fiscal outcome for this important component to the city. The clerk's office also processes daily deposits from customer service and the police department. We take and record, uh, minutes for the council and Board of Public Works meetings, handle solicitors' permits, post-public notices, record ordinance with the county's recorder's office, maintain reports on the public website and make daily bank deposits. We also are responsible for maintaining the federal and private grant site. This site is necessary in order to provide accurate and grant information to State Board of Accounts auditors. The financial records, financial systems and processes are maintained and managed by a mandate as set forth by the State Board of Accounts Accounting Manual. This manual is unique to governmental accounting. For the past twenty-three years, my audit, my office has been audited annually. With some audits, may have a few comments. The comments have never been such to affect our bond rating. The personnel in the clerk's office routinely attend classes and seminars to further our knowledge of the latest mandated financial requirements. We attend the required State Board of Account classes. We, we attain certi- certifications from other forms of education. While in office, I have gotten my IAMC, which is Indiana Municipal Clerk, my CMC, a Certified Municipal Clerk, CPFA. CPFA, MMCA, CPS, a PERF Ambassador, which was a major accomplishment, if anybody knows how difficult it is to work with PERF, and ADP Payroll Specialist certifications. I'm currently working on another level, the MMC certification. Within my staff, there are three people that have obtained an IMC, IAMC certification, one with a CMC certification, and two others working towards the CMC certifications. We will continue to attend classes and seminars to meet the most current financial requirements. While adapting to the ever-changing needs of a growing city, the clerk's office has implemented several new programs for the city to come more, become more efficient through automated process. At the department level, these processes are more automated. However, this automation is not fully realized in the clerk's office yet. We are making strides to improve the processes in the clerk's office, but we must be more diligent before investing in future programs to ensure that they will help my office to be more efficient while complying with State Board of Accounts mandated reporting requirements. As you can see, there's a lot more to the clerk's office than depositing some money and writing some checks. My office works as a team to just ensure that the city's financial information is accurately and fairly presented based upon the information we see from a variety of sources. And I invite any of you to come to the clerk's office at any time to see some of the processes, so we can show you what we do. And, um, just let me know. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate the detail on the, all the things you do. Counselors, any comments or questions? We've all been down there and watched them and know them well. Okay, let's move on and we will go to some old business. So at this time, we will, uh, hear some details on ordinance sixteen dash forty-one, Grand Park Field House, PUD, district amendment. Matt? Not Matt.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
Hi, Kevin.
For Matt this evening. Good evening, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. Uh, this item before you is a request to amend the Grand Park Field House PUD to allow additional wall signage as shown in the exhibits, um, that are a part of the ordinance amendment on your agenda. This item was introduced at your October tenth meeting. It received a public hearing with no, with no public comments received, and also received a unanimous favorable, favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission at their November- Uh, the petitioner, Mr. Vince Black, is here this evening. He's not planning to make a presentation, but is available for any questions that you may have. With that, this item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. As mentioned, this item is up for adoption consideration. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. The item is open for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carries. Ordinance sixteen dash fifty. Kevin?
Thank you again for the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you is a request to amend the one hundred and eighty-first Street Plan Unit Development to allow a religious institution on parcel A of this PUD district. This item was introduced at your November twenty-eighth meeting. It received a public hearing, again, with no public comment received, and received a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission at their December fifth meeting. The petitioner is here this evening and is available to answer any questions that you may have, but is not planning to make a presentation. And again, this item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Is there a motion on ordinance sixteen dash fifty, Hundred and Eighty-first Street, PUD amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to ordinance sixteen dash forty-six, Chatham Hills, PUD Amendment Three. Pam Howard, Pam, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for adoption consideration, have an amendment to the Chatham Hills Planned Unit Development District. Uh, this is located generally at the northeast corner of Two Hundred and Sixth Street and Oak Ridge Road, and the amendment will incorporate, incorporate five new parcels into the district. However, it does not alter any of the standards or increase the maximum number of units permitted. Uh, this was introduced to council at the November fourteenth meeting and did receive a public hearing and favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission on December fifth. I do have the petitioner from Hanky Development available for questions, if you have any of them. I'm also available if you have any questions of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Is there a motion on ordinance sixteen dash forty-six, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Pam. That completes our items under old business. We'll move to items of new business. Uh, I do have a point-of-order clarification. Counsel Brian, can we, do we have to take these next three items separately, or can we combine? Thank you. Please note that the next three items, ordinance sixteen dash forty-seven, sixteen dash forty-eight, and sixteen dash forty-nine, all relate to voluntary annexation, Chatham Hills. Sixteen forty-seven is phase eight, sixteen forty-eight is phase nine, sixteen forty-nine is phase ten. These have been properly advertised. This will be an introduction tonight, and we will also have a public hearing. These will be combined, and we will look to Pam Howard for that presentation. Welcome, Pam.
Thank you again, Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development Department. Again, this is three separate one hundred percent voluntary annexations to the Chatham Hills Planned Unit Development. These total approximately thirty-one acres and are, again, located at the northeast corner of Two Hundred and Sixth Street and Oak Ridge Road. Uh, they are eligible for public hearings tonight with adoption in January. Five of these parcels that are located in two of the annexation areas were just approved as part of that Planned Unit Development District Amendment. Um, one parcel was not included in the mea- the amendment, but may be included on a later amendment, um, per the, the petitioners. I do have the petitioners from Hanky Development, again, available this evening, if you have any questions of them. I am also available if you have any questions of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been properly noted for a public hearing unless there are comments.
I, I have one question. I don't remember, and could be my brain, um, doing the fiscal plans for these. Did we do those, and I just forgot?
No, tho- those will be back at the next meeting.
Oh, okay, 'cause it's saying that we have adopted them, and I, I know we hadn't, so.
Yeah, they will be once this is up for adoption consideration at your, at the January meeting.
Any other comments? I will open a public hearing on this item at seven thirty-eight. Do we have any cards?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. No, we have no cards.
Do you like to speak on the?
Excuse me?
You wouldn't, you wanna speak on any of these?
Sure.
Say no.
No, sir.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak on these, uh, voluntary annexations for Chatham Hills? Now is the time. Hearing and seeing no one approaching the podium, I will close the public hearing on these three items at seven thirty-nine. These are scheduled for adoption consideration at January ninth. Is there any urgency? Or is this flow-through? We don't need to do anything tonight, is that correct?
Yeah, and until the fiscal plan's adopted, these can't be adopted, and those, that will be presented at January ninth.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the, uh, I forgive me for speaking earlier, but, uh, we were talking, the next petitioner is going to be returning here from a, uh, coaching a basketball game. Could we move the next item to the last of the agenda, please?
We can probably do that.
Thank you.
I mean, since they're not here.
This is Indiana.
I think Kevin is prepared to co- cover the-
This is Indiana, so-
Basketball.
We defer to basketball?
And if we get to that item before he's here, Kevin's prepared to summarize.
Very good.
In his absence.
Thank you. Unless there's a, any point-of-order or a, an objection, we will, we will move to item sixteen fifty-two rather than sixteen fifty-one. Sixteen fifty-two is the Oak Ridge Point PUD. Dane?
Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you for introduction this evening is a proposal for an amendment to the Oak Ridge Point Planned Unit Development District, specifically the ORP Commercial Three District, uh, excuse me, Sub-District, which is located just west of the intersection of State Road Thirty-two and Oak Ridge Road. Uh, running concurrently with the proposed PUD amendment are plat and development plan proposals that will be reviewed by planning staff and the Plan Commission. This PUD amendment is to allow for the construction of a self-storage facility, as the current ordinance does not permit a self-storage business. This amendment also modifies a handful of development standards applicable to the development of the site. The proposal will follow the normal zoning process and is scheduled for a public hearing at the Plan Commission meeting on January fourth. Brad Shraggy with American Structure Point is here on behalf of the petitioner and will give a brief presentation. I'm happy to have any, to answer any questions you have at this time. Otherwise, I will turn it over to Mr. Shraggy for his presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brad Shraggy, uh, with, with American Structure Point. Again, we're here for you on behalf of our clients, uh, to present for a self-storage facility located at Oak Ridge Road and State Road Thirty-two. The development standards, uh, that we would be asking for variances from are in regards to building size. The minimum building size in the PUD is four thousand square feet. Due to the nature of the business, some of the, the buildings on, on-site would be less than that. The total square footage would obviously be well in it, above four thousand square feet, but I believe the variance is requesting for around a two thousand square foot minimum size. And there would be seven buildings on-site, as you can see from the site plan on the screen there. Uh, the south building is the building that houses the office space. That building is three stories and fifty-one thousand total square feet. And the remaining buildings around the perimeter of the site, uh, are the remainder of the self-storage units. Um, the other thing that is, the other item being requested is the building architecture variance. Um, the overlay district would require that, uh, horizontal relief would be required along all buildings. Due to the nature of the development, the interior buildings would not have the horizontal relief that's required by the ordinance. Um, all the exterior-facing facades would meet the requirement. Um, it would just be the interior facades that, uh, would not be visible from the public areas that would not, as the request at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Thank you. This is council introduction this evening. Would typically move to public hearing on January fourth. Any comments from the council?
I have, I have a couple. Um, the building that will be fronting Thirty-two, you said that's an office building, but it-
No, I apologize, it's, it has the office component of the self-storage facility. It is a storage building with the office portion where you would rent those facilities in the corner of that. So it is not an office building, it is a storage building, I apologize.
A- and that would be one of my first concerns with this project, is that I don't think this was what we envisioned for our State Road Thirty-two corridor in terms of the use. We were looking for employment-generating uses, and, um, we do allow services as ancillary. But for me, that, that's the first problem that, that I'm looking at from this, so, wanna let you know my concern.
I likewise would have a similar concern with the use. Uh, if this were to move forward, I think architecturally, uh, there would have to be some significant improvements on exterior buildings.
Okay.
Uh, even those on the sides. The interior, where you can't see them, that's one thing, but, uh, east and west elevations are, uh, will be visible, I think, from State Road Thirty-two.
Okay.
And I, and like Cindy, I would question whether this is even the use that we want on Thirty-two.
I'll third that emotion. The kind of further enhancement of that is the number of things that would be requesting waivers from the Thirty-two overlay in conjunction with it, if it was to approve. That's, I think we're pretty far from the mark on what it was that we were looking to achieve in this corridor, and I'm very interested in having more commercial uses, and I gather, though we were all pack rats, there's probably a wonderful market for all of this, but this probably is not the wonderful place to put this.
I also concur with my fellow counselors in that we spent a lot of time on the Thirty-two overlay, and it's very important to maintain the integrity of that plan, and I just don't see this fitting in. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselors? This is scheduled to move ahead without objection. Is there an objection? How do you wanna handle it?
I would prefer that it not. I think, uh, I don't think we can prevent, legally prevent them from moving ahead to APC. And if that's what they choose to do, I, they can do that. I think, uh, the message, I think, is fairly clear from the council that we don't believe this is the appropriate use for this location.
I would prefer that it not move as well. I'm not gonna stomp my feet and scream if it does, but I think that if the petitioner wanted to go back and think through the number of uses and perhaps see if there's some other site in the Oak Ridge Point PUD that maybe this could fit, I'd not be, you know, adverse to revisiting this somehow or other, but I got a real concern that this is not the place to do what this is proposing, and that it's not the best use of everybody's resources to follow the path. If council says we need to allow it to go, if the petitioner wants to, I'm not gonna have a real heartache over it, but I think we've all expressed enough concerns, those of us that have spoken, that handwriting is on the wall.
Absolutely.
I, you, I think that, um, there probably are better locations. I wouldn't object to this use on Thirty-two as a secondary, in other words, behind, if, if we had a property that was deeper. Uh, but I don't believe this is the use we want, taking up our Thirty-two frontage, as, as several of us have said. Doesn't look too good.
Master of understatement.
Under- understood, uh, your guys' concerns, and I will get back with, with the petitioners. I obviously can't make that decision for them at this time, so I would ask that we do move forwards at this time. Um, and if something changes between now and then, we will make staff aware of the request.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You have heard the comments, so- You have heard the comments, so you're welcome to move ahead without total support, obviously.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to ordinance 16-39, it's our 2017 proposed or the elected official's salary. And tonight is a council introduction, and it will be up for council consideration and internal comments and so forth. There will be no action taken tonight. The adoption consideration will be taken at our final meeting of December. So with that, Brian, is there anything you want to state or?
No, sir, you've covered it.
Your name's on here, but.
Uh, yeah.
There's no inter- I mean, you're not, you're not going to go over it. It has been posted, right?
Actually, I can't speak to that. It was posted on the agenda, but I didn't draft it, so.
On our website. So at this time, do I have any comments from the council? As mentioned, this is an introduction tonight. You'll have plenty of opportunity. We've had opportunity already to discuss this, and then we will, it will come before us for adoption on the, uh, 27th.
I would, I would just comment that, um, the council has not had an increase at all for, I believe, seven years. And I had, I felt like, um, it's better to have some small increases, kind of cost of living type increases. I believe this calculates out to 2%, um, which is similar to what our other employees are getting. And I, I just think it's good to kind of keep up with, uh, with inflation and the rest of the world, uh, rather than come in at some point with a large increase. So that, that includes clerk treasurer and mayor. So I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to do periodically, uh, to review each year, um, and keep salaries on pace. I can speak personally that this is a tremendous amount of work as a counselor, and I'm sure the same is true for mayor and clerk treasurer. And I'm not in this for the money, but it is nice to at least meet my expenses and have a little extra pocket change for the hundreds of hours that I contribute each year. So, um, like I say, I'm not in this for the money, but I think as we move forward, uh, new council members, uh, need to be compensated at a fair rate, and I think this, uh, small increase will help do that over the years.
No, no city could afford to pay for your services by the hour, Mr. President.
Any other comments? As mentioned, this will be up for adoption consideration. At this time, we will move to look at some 2016 utility write-offs. Typically, we deal with this either at this meeting or the last meeting of the month. So we'll deal with it right now. We'll, I think the clerk has given us some information or something, right?
I don't have any. It's from the customer service.
From customer service?
It's 130 bucks. It has to be done every year. What, usually these write-offs are a lot more than this. They've been going down recently. Uh, the amount of money that needs to be written off is usually the result of insolvent estates, people who move away. Staff's done an incredible job over, I'd say, the last five to 10 years to really decrease the amount that needs to be written off. But this, this action is necessary by the council so the books balance at the end of the year.
Move to approve the 2016 write-offs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. At this time, we're ready to adjourn.
No. We have the items. We're ready to go. Okay, move to adjourn.
What happens when you, when you show up late?
We need to know if he won.
At this time, we will, we will back up in our agenda and we will, uh, ask Kevin Todd to step forward and introduce us to ordinance 16-51. This will be the Grand Millennium Center PUD District. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you again, Mr. President, member of the council. Good evening. For the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. As mentioned, this item, uh, for introduction is a request for a new planned unit development in downtown Westfield called the Grand Millennium Center Planned Unit Development. Property is approximately 66 acres in size, located on the east side of US 31, um, between Park Street and 169th Street, also called David Brown Drive. The petitioner will describe for us in a moment in more detail, um, the proposal, but the concept shows a mixture of uses, including commercial, residential and civic uses to be included in this project. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the January 4th Advisory Plan Commission meeting, and will return to you at a future date for adoption consideration. At this time, the petitioner, Mr. Birch Dalton, is here this evening, um, and would like to make a brief presentation. Following his presentation, if you have any questions for staff, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dalton, welcome. Did you win your game?
Uh, we did not.
That puts you in a bad mood?
No. It's just an eighth grade basketball game, so.
Welcome.
We'll talk about it later, but I apologize. The game did run a little late. It was a good game, so we went a little farther. The good news is I bought my own pointer, so from now on, we'll do it. But, um, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to discuss this project. It's, it's kind of moved along pretty, pretty quick, so, uh, I will say that the neighborhood meetings and the task force meeting will start tomorrow morning, and, uh, we will get out and, and talk with the public and give them a chance to, uh, give input on it, uh, on this. But the project, uh, if, if you look at it, we're taking advantage of 31 here, all the way down 169th Street, with the new road that the city is in the process of designing in conjunction with the development. Um, this opens this up from, uh, 32 and will be the new Westfield Boulevard down 169th and eventually on down to 161st, hopefully. But, um, when you look at this grand, big development, we've broken it into five, six, and maybe even seven separate developments. Here, we have an urban grocery store. If you've looked at, uh, the fuse at, across the street from Mackey Arena, on the first floor, they have an urban grocery store, about 20,000 square feet, a bank and a pharmacy. Then above it, they have about 150 units. Probably won't be that big, um, but we have a lot of interest from the same owner of the grocery store here, uh, working with him. Here is commercial, office space. What's kind of sped this process along with the need to do it is that we're in the hunt, uh, for a potentially large corporate headquarters right here. Across the way is a proposed, uh, site for YMCA. Uh, here is a proposed opportunity for a possible civic building. Here is multifamily to kind of add on to what Hart's done so nicely here. Here we have a convention center and then three hotels. And they would be built based on demand out of the convention center or out of the corporate headquarters. It's proposed to be a Marriott full-service Delta, a mid-market hotel, and then a limited service. So we have three price points here servicing, uh, the convention meeting center. What we have, we're taking advantage of all the existing trails, uh, and adding on. We'll be able to come under, hit the Monon, go up to Grand Park this way. Uh, we have a trail that will actually cut through there over to Union there, and then obviously, we're playing off Grand Junction as we believe it's an anchor for this project, along with all the good work that's happening on Park. It, uh, we've, we've got a lot of 3D images. It's very, uh, modern glass metal look, uh, a lot of curves to it, a lot of height, a lot of density. And things will change, obviously, but, uh, the multi-use, uh, aspect of this project will not. And I apologize that I haven't got around to each and every one of you to kind of allow you to ask questions, but over the next month or so, happy to meet one-on-one, walk the site, drive the site and, and look at it. But, uh, it took, uh, about a year to get all the property tied up. You know, there's, there's two land sellers, so it's, it's not as bad as assembling like we would along 32. You know, the new road obviously makes it happen, and I believe it's public knowledge that we have the funds for that. Uh, and so, uh, we've had some good news on how that road design, uh, will have to come through the wetlands and over the, the drain here. So we've had some cost savings already before we started, so it should allow us to do something very, very nice on this, uh, Westfield Boulevard. Several uses proposed. We're down the road, uh, pretty well with the, the hotel developer. We feel that we're in a good spot here in the next month or so on the YMCA. I can tell you that they're very interested in being back in Westfield, and they've looked at this site, and it's definitely under consideration. But, you know, probably the most immediate is if we can get this corporate headquarters, we'd have a thousand to 1,200 new en- employees in Westfield. So with that, I'll answer any questions at this time, but I would respectfully request that you allow me move through the process and, and work with staff and the city and economic development to, uh, to push this through. You'll see the renderings here, um, a couple of parking garages, um, we got some height, and we got some very, very cool-looking buildings. So, um, this would be the corporate headquarters. This section, and this is based on their RFP we responded to, this is actually a fitness center, which if we land the Y, we can now lose that and save about three, four million on the building. So we have some opportunities that other sites don't have. So we're in the fight pretty well right now. You got another rendering?
I think that's all that's on here.
Okay. I will share with you. We have a video, uh, I'll give a link that where you'll be able to go through the entire, um, site with, uh, with the 3D models. Is there any questions at this time?
I've just got a couple. Uh, I assume YMCA would be a fundraising campaign in order to support that building. Would that be correct?
Absolutely, but, uh, the land develop, uh, team, the land ownership, we're prepared to donate the ground to make sure we can secure the, the site and be the lead gift.
Assuming normal bumps along the way, what would you see as the potential time to build this out?
The entire project is probably, you know, anywhere from three to five years easily. If we are fortunate enough to get the corporate headquarters, they want to break ground this fall and occupy by the first quarter of '19, but it's a two-year build-out. Um, the convention center, depending how with the final structures on it, that could, you know, our original plan did not include office buildings, so we're kind of blessed and lucky that we even had the opportunity because it didn't dawn on me, or actually, I probably didn't listen to everybody up there, said bring office buildings. So, uh, you know, regardless, if we win that, we're going to keep that office and go after it. A lot of energy, a lot of momentum, a lot of interest in it. Um, and I will tell you, since the newspaper article I was in on the paper a couple of weeks ago announcing the project, every developer, and I'm talking every developer, has called me, from Duke, Browning, so a lot of companies are now taking notice of this. And what they might not get here, they may get farther up the road. So it's a good opportunity to really show, you know, the potential for office here along the 31 corridor. You had another question, Dr. King?
Any other comments?
Parking areas, are they attached to the corporate headquarters?
Yeah, you have a 800 space parking structure here, and then down below, you'll have another one with the convention center, and then, you know, we have the surface parking. You know, being the high density, you know, the issues we got to deal with is that we don't want to lose the valuable ground to surface parking, but then also, we have to bear in mind the traffic flow going north at certain times of the day. So a lot of people are figuring it out smarter than I on that, but to answer your question, parking structure here, possible pro- uh, parking structure there, and then the rest is like surface here and then surface down around the, the, obviously, that's multifamily here, but that's surface parking there. But it's kind of like if we have the YMCA and the corporate headquarters, the site plan would cha- change because we would probably conjoin them. And then also on the hotels, there's probably a case, we had a convention architect in today to kind of start the ball rolling. He suggested that we conjoin one of the hotels to the convention center. So, you know, other people are now getting involved, bringing some ideas to the table.
I guess, I guess my question was the, uh, the corporate headquarters, would they be providing a parking place for their employees and guests?
That parking structure would be for the corporate headquarters. They need at least a thousand spaces. So, and we propose 800, uh, covered in the balance here. And they want a future expansion area right there, so they're coming in with a request for 250,000 square feet with another 100,000 square feet in the future. So again, you know, the corporate user, potential corporate user, really enjoyed our building, thought it was exactly what they were visioning. And now we're down on two, two issues. One, unknowns, of which, you know, we're lobbying pretty strongly that, that we pulled off Grand Park, we're pulling off Grand Junction, so this is right in Westfield's wheelhouse to get done, you know, with our own, uh, development team. And then, um, too far north, well, we had a time study done today, we're exactly two minutes, nine seconds from their current corporate headquarters. So, you know, we're competing with the Beltway, 465 and Meridian, so we got amenities they don't have down there. We have trails they don't have. And, you know, people can walk to eat versus where they're at down there, so, um, there's a full-court press going on, if you would, and it's a good opportunity, and if by chance we don't get it, we're going to stick with that plan and market it to other corporate users because we can use the room nights and we can use the employee base. It's a big taxpayer right there.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll watch this move through the process. Next time you're late, bring us something big.
Hey, Birch, keep us apprised of when those meetings are in the neighborhood, please.
Well, tomorrow's 9:00 AM, uh, downtown task force, and I'll, I'll get the memos out on the neighborhood.
Thank you, Birch. Appreciate all your efforts. Okay, let's move back down towards the, uh, towards the final items. I will bring to the public attention that typically, we do have a closeout meeting that we schedule uh, at some point in time based on the, the clerk's, uh, kind of the business things that she's wrapping up, economic development, uh, and usually, we don't set that. We have decided that in the best interest of everybody that we will set that meeting. It's going to be on December 27th at 9:30 AM right here. As of now, what we will do is we will address issues of closeout items dealing with, uh, some of the clerk's business and the la- last claim sheet, claim docket. Uh, you, you can watch the agenda. Uh, it's, we have no idea exactly what's going to come through economic development, but if there's something there, we'll deal with it. If not, uh, there probably will not be in there any introductions at that time. So with that noted, it does complete our agenda, and I would open now for council comments.
Give an update on last week's APC meeting. We did, uh, the APC approved, um, development plan, site plan for Liberty Ridge subdivision. Approved the Grand Junction Brewing Company Development Plan. Add a public comment on the Aurora Planned Unit Development, uh, amendments or the changes to that. Had a public comment on the Aurora Planned Unit Development, uh, the amendments or the changes to that. Also had a public hearing on Drexler Woods Planned Unit Development. Had public hearings on the Chatham Hills Planned Unit Development. And that received a favorable recommendation. We saw that this evening. And also uh, development plan and site plan for section three of Chatham Hills. We had uh, public hearings also on one hundred and eighty-first Street Planned Unit Development and that is the, in relation to the church that we addressed tonight. That received a favorable recommendation and the final item, we had a public hearing on the uh, development plan for the Get Go at Harmony.
I believe that was it. Yeah, the
You got a comment?
The Oversight Committee is functioning. We've had one preliminary meeting. We'll be having another meeting Wednesday, I believe, Wednesday afternoon. So we're off and running and that'll be a, probably a slow process the first year, but we'll get through it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other counselors? Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, uh, thank you Chuck. I just wanted to say, you know, we sadly, we started out last week with a uh, loss of a life here in the city, taken, ended up being a, a murder. It was a Westfield young man, I understand. Uh, it involved drugs, once again. I want to congratulate Chief Rush and Scott Jordan and their people for their actions in a relatively short period of time. We're able to reassure the public that this was not a random act of violence. Unfortunately, it was drug connected, uh, but they did a great job in apprehending, uh, I think, a couple of suspects in a very quick manner. One thing that I would like to do in light of this is being local and a young man, I understand his mother was of course, the, the, the son had had some issues and he was uh, trying to get his life turned around, but it might be a good case for us and lieu of, or in light of all of our work as we do extensively in avoiding this kind of thing with our youth assistance program, and I don't know how to go about doing this. When things do shake through the legal process at some point in time, I'd love to look at this as a Westfield kid and say, you know, how could we as a community uh, have been more active in this uh, in this young man's life to, to avoid this kind of thing? So we'll, we'll see where that goes. Sad way to uh, start the Christmas season. On a happy note, another great Westfield and Lights melody and all of her uh, ladies of the parks and now gentlemen of the parks. We have Peter working for us in the Parks Department. Great. You guys did another uh, phenomenal event. I think the young'uns of our city thoroughly enjoyed all that and that was uh, that was so much fun. The weather cooperated. Uh, speaking of weather, you know, we're moving into my favorite snow plowing season, so uh, keep, keep advised. Take a look at the website on the snow, uh, the, the active snow removal site that we have there. And check on the snow removal tab and you can see during the heavy events where we are, where we haven't been. You can tell us where we haven't been, you always do, but we can tell you perhaps how soon we're going to get there, so. Closing out this year, it was uh, obviously the first partial year for the Grand Park E- Event Center, or affectionately now called the G-Pac. We actually have had uh, twenty-seven events officially scheduled out there, bringing in over twenty-one thousand people that wouldn't have been there last year and I don't imagine that number probably includes the uh, the, the Trump rally that actually occurred with about eight thousand people before the, before the uh, building even opened, but uh, this will be a, a year of growth for the event center and uh, it's starting out very, very well. We've got some great leadership uh, with William Knox, uh, out of Grand Park now that's uh, keeping a good eye on not only uh, the planning for next year, for the entire facility, but for great use for the uh, for the event center, so uh, and I don't imagine too many of you will make our twenty-seventh meeting at nine-thirty AM, so on behalf of the city, I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And the council also. Mr. That does complete our items of the agenda this evening unless there is an objection. It is now time to adjourn. Stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Merry Christmas.